Hi, everybody. We're going to start this meeting at 6 o'clock, November 29th. The Wyndham Elementary School Board Meeting. Additions and deletions to the agenda?
Yes, please. Can we add the security concerns?
Yep. Let's put that under... Well, why don't we just put it under "Old Business," because we discussed this. So, "Old Business B." Security Concerns. Anybody else? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to move on to correspondence. I have received none.
I believe we've received one from Sarah E. regarding the bus schedule.
Okay.
That there was a situation where the bus schedule was shared on Facebook.
Oh, okay.
And that was a concern. So, I don't know if you want to... That could technically be included under the security concerns piece, if you want to put it there, or if you want to talk about it here under correspondence.
I think we can talk about it under correspondence, because my understanding for that, thanking for bringing that up, Abby, was that that was perhaps dealt with in that we're going to, I think, just post addresses, but not names?
Right, in the future, yeah. When we make that bus list, we're just not going to put the kids' names on it. We'll just put the addresses and the times in hopes that that will end that issue.
Does that sound reasonable? Is Sarah on?
I have no idea, but I would say...
Yeah, I just got here.
Okay, no, that's great, Sarah. So, it sounds like we tried to address this situation so far regarding posting of the bus schedule to not include names, but just addresses. Does that sound reasonable to you, or do you want to discuss it further?
You have to forgive me. I have six stitches in my lip right now from like a minor dental situation. So, bear with me.
Yeah.
Yes, moving forward, I think that's a much more reasonable idea for families to get the list with no names, just addresses. I think posting it on social media, especially in a page that had nothing to do with just students, but it was like a town-wide page, was irresponsible and scary. So, like I said, moving forward with no names, just addresses, I think is fine. We also have to be aware, like ours, for example, is posted on our refrigerator, but other folks might end up in the recycling or the garbage or blowing away like a plastic bag. So, it's like now all this information is being released somewhere, potentially. So, I just think it's a big safety issue overall. And I'm glad that we're talking about it, that the conversation is open.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak to this topic about the bus schedule? Or things... Equally, things posted on Facebook that might include a student's name, which obviously, as everybody knows, we can't even discuss student names here as a school board in these meetings. So, anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, I would like to say that that's... You know, I agree with Sarah on that. I would even be leery about sending out the addresses. There would be a way that maybe the bus drivers have the addresses as they need them. But as far as the families go, do we really need to be giving out people's addresses? For the exact points that Sarah just pointed out, they can be placed in like seemingly harmless ways. I mean, I don't believe that the situation that took place was with any kind of malice intended. But at the same time, those are... You know, we have releases and things that get signed for people for that. So, to be mindful. So, the way... I think if we are communicating that information, if there's some kind of formality around that, at least being, you know, very clear that that's not something that, you know, you share on a public space like that. But I would even say maybe even the parents' names of the stops versus the kids, and not even have the address on the list. You just know, look for your name and your time. So, I mean, it's not releasing any of that information. I don't know what people's thoughts are on that.
Okay. So... Oh, sure, Crystal.
So, I'm just going to speak to this. We all know I posted it. One person saw it before I fixed it and removed the addresses. That was Sarah. I know that for a fact, because I checked with the moderator. It was posted to the Wyndham Facebook page.
Okay.
People of Wyndham use that page. It was posted because I was messaged by six people asking if I knew what time they'd be picked up with the two-hour delay.
Okay.
You can't not send that information to parents, like the bus routes. Like, to say only the bus drivers can have it? Like, I'm a parent of two kids here, and I expect to get that information.
Okay. So, do you think that there's a better way? Because knowing the bus driver, as I do, is there a way... And I know his cellphone number and his email. Is there a way that we can try and maybe put this in the context that he's the person to read... I'm sorry that there's confusion. I'm not really sure about what happened, because I don't have kids in the elementary school, and my daughter drives.
And it wasn't just elementary school.
It was...
I get messaged from Leland and Gray parents.
Okay.
So, it's like a whole.
Okay. So, maybe for now, if we can, I think the understanding is...
Could I cut in real quick?
Hold on one second, Michael, if you don't mind. For now, if... I think we're all in agreeance that some people are uncomfortable with children's names and addresses being put online, which is completely understandable. And I get where it's a snow day, it's a delay, it's whatever, and everybody's trying to figure out what's happening, you know, with the route. Can I speak to the bus driver and see if the bus driver has a feeling about how maybe he can move forward to make everybody feel comfortable with this and to get the information out?
I would say that every person should provide their cellphone number or their home phone number to the bus drivers. Because I can tell you, and Cord and Michael can probably speak to this, I'm probably one of the only people that texts the two of them to say, "Don't stop in my house. My kids aren't getting on." "Kylie's not getting on the bus today."
Yep. No, I understand. With my three kids, I've had that. "No, no, no, don't come to our house. We're not ready." So, I'm going to do that on my part. I'm going to talk with the bus driver and just see if... And the bus driver's very smart, and I think he'll be more than willing to work with us to see how we can make everybody comfortable. Michael, sorry, go ahead.
I have my hand up, too, by the way.
Yeah, I'm going to go. Michael had his hand up first, and then, yeah, Sarah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, my two cents are, I was driving that day, and I received a whole bunch of texts from various people, because that particular day was a Wednesday, and the high school kids, the folks that go down to the high school, have to delay start anyway that day.
Yes.
So, their schedule is all weird anyway and wonky. So, everybody was kind of confused. That's what they're supposed to do. So, I totally understand, you know, like, at that point, it did need... Like, people needed to know somehow. So, like, maybe we need to work as if maybe the... I don't know. Like, I know that Bridgette has the phone number, email addresses of all the folks that have kids in the elementary school. Perhaps that needs to be also something that she has for the high schoolers. If she doesn't, and maybe if there's a snow day or some sort of scheduling change, that she could just send it out, you know, quote-unquote, mass email to all these particular folks, saying, "Hey, the schedule's going to change. Add two hours off at XYZ time," or whatever the thing is. So, there's basically easy communication in terms of that. The other thing is, in terms of the releasing of the bus schedule, it might be interesting to see what the other schools are doing, because clearly, there's a whole lot more folks that are, you know, clearly getting on the bus. So, they might have a different way they do it. Maybe they don't pick up directly at folks' houses. Like, I don't know. But it might be interesting just to see what they're doing. Maybe they're doing something that we can learn from. Perhaps they've already been through similar issues with potential, you know, release of information at folks' home. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michael. I do know in the past, there was a time when the... Our school bus driver, the Wyndham Elementary School bus driver, did not get some of the notifications that were coming out from Leland and Gray. So, that is something that we've been working on. So, that is great. I think that's fantastic. And I will... I can look into that as to what the other schools are doing. So, thank you for that. Sarah?
So, to touch base on Michael's point for a moment, I know when we were in the Chester and Dover School District, we did get a bus list sent home, just addresses and times. Granted, Althea was in kindergarten, and we were driving her, so we didn't really need it, which is even more interesting. We didn't need the bus schedule, but we got it anyways, with everybody's address on it. So, that is what one local school is doing, or at least was doing, five years, four years ago, whatever. And to touch base on Crystal's point of posting it in the town of Wyndham Facebook group, there's 90-something members in that group, and some of which no longer live in town. So, therefore, that is an inappropriate place to post that. And it is my opinion that if I were to receive six phone calls from different parents regarding scheduling, I would direct them to the school in which their children go to and not take it upon myself to share information broadly like that, unless it was either I had permission. I guess that's it. If I had permission from every parent that I could post publicly information like that, because it's not my responsibility to be sharing that. It is the responsibility of the confused parents to take it upon themselves as an adult to find that information out. Thanks.
Any other hands up?
Bridgette.
Bridgette. Bridget Corby, sorry. Bridget Corby, what are you doing? Why are you there? Why aren't you here? You're usually right here.
I know. I've got children tonight with me.
Hi.
So, I'm here.
No, that's fine.
So, just to kind of piggyback on what Michael was saying, we did have kind of a confusing night the night before with Leland and Gray being on a not typical Wednesday schedule. And so, an email did go out Wednesday night to the Leland and Gray families. Like, moving forward, we can just send it out to everyone, kind of guiding them. We definitely can take, like I said, names off. I think that makes perfect sense. I don't really know how to create a bus schedule without addresses. And I think that sending addresses out to families is pretty common. So, I hear what people are saying and the concern for safety. But there is a fine line where you can go... Unless we're emailing directly every single family that we have at Wyndham and Leland and Gray, which is possible. We're really small. There's not really a way to do it without having some information out there in a bus schedule. And I think you can do an appropriate bus schedule without having too much personal information. I think most schools put out a schedule without names. So, I'm happy to check in with other schools as well and see what we can do. But I think that taking the names off is probably the easiest path forward.
Okay. That's great. Yeah, I agree with you. I know oftentimes, the bus schedules without names are posted in newspapers. So... But yes, to try and move forward. Bridgette, how do you feel about talking to the bus driver at some point?
Oh, that's fine. We can do that and kind of circle back with everyone.
Yeah, let's do that. And like I said, I will contact Leland and Gray, because it seems to me, Bridgette, you should be the point person as far as if there's any changes. Does that seem fair for Leland and Gray?
Yep.
I hate to add to your...
No, that's fine.
None of this should be really coming up again, now that everybody knows the schedule. It was that whole Wednesday thing that caused the problem in the first place. Everyone now knows it just goes from the original start time. So, this shouldn't happen again. I understand the name and the concerns with that, and we'll address that. But as far as this commotion and confusion, it shouldn't happen again.
Yeah. Okay. No, that's great. And I understand, you know, yeah, when people are calling you.
Yeah, and I have two kids to get ready myself.
Don't shoot the messenger.
So, I can't...
Yeah, no, it is.
And I don't know, for whatever reason, these Leland and Gray parents apparently didn't see the email.
Didn't come until really late. Bob, I showed up for the concert that night. I remember, and Bob was like, "Oh, my God, everyone's calling him." He was losing his mind. He's like, "This is the one thing we did not plan for." So, they didn't have a plan. They hadn't gotten the information out. Nobody knew it was going to happen. So, it makes sense that everybody...
I'm not about to tell Rory and Drew and Rachel, "Be adults and figure it out."
Right, yeah. Right. Okay. So, it's good. So, it sounds like Leland and Gray, Bob is dealing with it. Bob is the principal, the... Actually, the new...
Superintendent.
Upcoming superintendent. So, this sounds like a good conversation. So, thank you. Anybody else want to add? Michael?
I guess my last question is, when we're looking at what other schools are doing, maybe I'm trying to inquire whether they're doing drop-off and pickups at people's homes as well, or if they're just doing bus stops.
Exactly. Right.
Because I would take that whole conversation about addresses related to people's names out of it, if it was just a bus stop. Not that I'm advocating for it, because I personally like have my kids dropped off. But, you know, it's just a thought. Interesting to see what other folks are doing, too.
Thank you, Mike. I think Mickey wants to respond to that.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Michael. That makes a lot of sense. My belief, and we could check with Bill on this, and my personal experience in Grafton, was that there's a mixture of home addresses and bus stops at the other towns. That they do a combination of both.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Oh, Bill's here.
Bill, you want to add anything else about the other schools, towns in this area? What they do? Is this an issue? What... Do you have any guidance?
I think that the Chester and Dover example is exactly what occurs in most places. And as Michael just mentioned, and you just mentioned, it's a combination of addresses and locations, the corner of. So, I think that's very common.
Okay. Great. Does everybody feel good about that, moving forward? We're going to take the names out, and yeah, we'll just continue the conversation and hope everybody that's super comfortable. And obviously, if you're not, then you continue to do this. Just let us know, for sure. 100%. Unless there's anything else, we're going... Unless any... Oh, sorry. Members of the public. Do you have Peter Vares? Do you have all the members of the public?
Oh, thank you for asking.
Of course.
I don't have the videographer's name. Is that Brian? Somebody?
It is Brian.
Brian what?
Guy Guerino.
Brian Guerino?
Brian Guerino. All right, Brian, I'm going to ask, how does it spell Guerino? Okay.
I got it right.
No.
Nice.
And is Sarah D. Sarah Edelman?
Yes.
Yes.
I think we're good.
Great. Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Brian, for being here. Okay, moving on to other...
Abby, Abby has her hand up.
Sorry. Go ahead, Abby.
This is for the members of the public. So, I'm making this comment as a member of the public. So, when I've mentioned the security concerns, I would just like to share what our communities are facing as far as changes that have happened around us. I mean, this goes across our country. We have a huge uptick in violence. A lot of that is due to serious issues around substance use concerns. People are struggling with addiction. We have an out-of-control homeless population. The first responders across the board are dealing with the staffing crisis. They've been dealing with it for over two years now. There's been a lot of really good, hard work that we've done in the state to make a lot of improvement, but people are tired. With that, the concerns being brought forward are from a perspective of a lot has changed in society. A lot has become more dangerous. And it doesn't stop just because we're in a moral community. So, I just want to ask that going forward, any discussions that people bring up regarding security, that we look at them seriously and consider that as the background as to why that is. There's a lot of horrible things that have happened across our country. And we want to make sure that not only are our children safe, but those that are cared for as well. So, thank you very much, and just please keep that in mind and lock your doors and be safe.
Thank you, Abby. Obviously, we're going to discuss that further, "Old Business B." So, yeah, we're definitely something that's been in discussion and something that's been worked on for a couple of weeks now, a few weeks now, maybe. So, but yeah, once we get to that, absolutely. I think everybody's concern is obviously for the well-being of our students and our staff. Anybody else from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none, let's move on to "Old Business: Approval of Minutes" from October 25th.
I have some corrections to add, if we can.
What's that mean?
Under, I think it's 1, 2, 3, the fourth paragraph, you have Ms. Felton suggested that the policy was discriminatory. I would like to say, Ms. Felton suggested that the discussion about whether or not the child had special needs was discriminatory in itself. Please. Thank you.
I have to find this again. I'm on a different system. Ms. Felton suggested?
So, yes, you have Ms. Felton suggested that the policy... I wasn't talking about the policy. It was the discussion about whether or not the child had special needs that was discriminatory.
How far down? You made a couple of suggestions.
So, under the "Parent Request Access for Home Study Student"?
Yeah, third paragraph.
1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down?
So, instead of... Right, you got that.
Okay, and you would like that to read what?
That the discussion about whether or not the child had special needs was discriminatory in itself. Was about policy.
Okay, so it's all...
And then also, under "Discussing Grants", Friends of the Wyndham School. It's Friends of the Wyndham School House, and the abbreviation is FWS.
Okay. This is the first one.
I think that's all I have.
Where is the grant thing?
So, it was after we discussed the school security. So, page 2, the very last point on the page, "Discuss Grants."
So, "Discuss Grants."
Some of the schools are larger grants. Ask who would be the contact person.
Nope. So, the very first sentence. Ms. Felton reported...
Yes, Friends of Wyndham School.
That Friends of the Wyndham School. It should be School House, one word.
Oh.
And the abbreviation is actually FWS. And that is the corrections with those amended. I would make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have any answer? Russ?
Sorry, go ahead, Russ.
It's a point of order, Beth. In order to have a discussion of the minutes, you have to have a motion to accept them or approve them.
You're right, Russ. Sorry. I'll make a motion.
Then you went directly into discussing the minutes without having a motion to approve.
I did. I'll backtrack there, Russ, and we can start again. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? And that is when Abby...
Beneath the corrections I had suggested. Peter, you got those?
Yes, indeed.
Great. Any other discussion?
Perfect.
Thanks, Abby. Thanks, Russ.
Thank you.
Yep. Any...
I shall append, as amended, to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Great.
Make a motion to... Yes.
You're good.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Russ and Abby, for being on that. Okay. Next is B, "Security Concerns." So, I am going to turn this over to Bill. I don't know if Greg is on. Is Greg Frost, our Buildings and Maintenance person, on?
No, Greg is not on, because the board tasked Mickey with contacting the state-level security expert, and Mickey reported back to the board.
Okay.
So, Greg was not consulted or asked to come to me.
Okay. So, you're on.
Okay. Yeah, so I spoke with Mark for, I don't remember, an hour and a half. I've got several pages of notes in the other room. We went through the email that we had received from the concerned citizen and tried to address everything together. He had a couple of recommendations, things that we are following through on that I'll get to eventually in my principal's report as well. And Bridgette can update a little bit more, because she's been really a big part of the process. But a couple of things, I guess, stand out from that conversation. And the first one was that he was adamant that he would not come to the school board meeting to discuss security at a school board meeting. He felt like it was very inappropriate for us to have this conversation in a public forum, and that it's a conversation between the board and the staff. Pretty much, that's where those things should be discussed. So, he was very certain he did not want to be here and doesn't feel like these things too specifically should get discussed in a public, open forum at a meeting. And he... What else did he say? He said, "The number-one greatest thing that we could do security-wise here with such a small school in such a unique situation is making sure that we have somebody at the front of the building all day who can keep an eye on the cameras." So, the recommendation was that we move all of the equipment so that it's visible out in the front, so that Bridgette could be there all day, keeping an eye on that. He said, "The first line in the major line of defense at this point in the most recent incidents has been that somebody in the front of the school is there to let everybody know that something doesn't look right outside the school or somebody's trying to get in. And if we don't have somebody aware of those things," that's his biggest concern. That somebody should be out front, keeping an eye on the cameras on the front door, just be aware. Because if we're in our classrooms, teaching around the back, we're not even going to know that. So, those are the two things that really stood out for me. Again, I can go through all the specifics with the board members at some point, one at a time, if they would like to go over all those notes about what he said about each in particular thing. But those are the two standout things. And also, Bridgette is going to be taking some kind of a course, which I have, again, referenced in my principal's report, but she can give me more information on that as well. So, that's what I got.
Okay. Real quick, and I see the hands up, Russ, Abby, Bridgette. I'm just going to try and remind the board members in particular that you do not, if this was their recommendation, that's not our job.
Meaning what?
As a board.
To do it as a public forum, that's what he said.
As a public forum, we, we can come forward as, as, as public community members, but as board members, no.
We would all talk together in private about things that need to be addressed.
Yes, so I just, yes, you-
That's what I was told.
My support is, is there because that, that, we're not experts on this. I'm not a security expert. Russ is not. Abby's not. That is not our role. And we are not also educational, um, staff.
Right.
We're board members. So, I'm going to, that's my take. Um, so, I'm going to go, Russ, Abby, Michael, Bridgette. Uh, Abby, I don't know. Do you have any hand up? It's a different color.
Yes, that is, that is my hand.
Okay, great. So, let's go, Russ, Abby, Michael, Bridgette, right down the line. So, Russ, go ahead.
My suggestion is that at some meeting in the near future, we schedule an executive session to occur before the public meeting. In other words, we might convene the executive session at 5:30 and allow a half an hour for the board members and the staff of the school, which is Mickey and, um, Bridgette and even Bill Anton, to have a discussion about school security. And then, once we've had that half an hour meeting, we can adjourn her and then start the public meeting at 6 o'clock if we have the seat. This would give us an opportunity to discuss it between ourselves and to have it not be in a public forum. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can take that into account. Uh, Abby?
Well, thank you. Um, so, I actually went and was trying to figure out, um, who to be contacting, not just like how, how we would respond here in Wyndham. And what I was able to find was the Vermont School Safety Center, um, and spoke with Sonny Erickson today. And Sonny and Rob Evans, um, are partners in dealing with the school safety program. Actually, uh, Sonny is the school safety program manager. So, they explained that Mark Moody is the, um, he works for the, the Visbitz, the Vermont Insurance School Board person, um, and that he's a very lovely person, but, um, as far, he's more on the liability insurance side. So, my thought was that we could be collaborating with Sonny and Rob about what they have for ideas, um, versus with Mr. Moody. I know that we were invited to talk with him, but given that my conversation that took place today, um, their, the, the security by design really would be looking at how the best way to address any of the concerns. Uh, it was also made clear that clearly, you don't want to discuss in a public forum details of plans around, you know, confidential information, but that the school board forum is exactly the appropriate place for members of the public and parents to bring their concerns if they have concerns about security. So, I guess I would say that, that since this is something that I also strongly believe in, I will happily, you know, be the person to connect with Sonny and Rob and maybe what Russ had talked about, maybe get one of them to attend something with us as well to discuss the concerns, uh, maybe in an executive session. They do deal with, um, I don't think that they would be able to attend an actual meeting, but it, it, at least if we were able to draw up some plans as far as what we're hearing, um, I would really prefer probably their guidance than, um, than Mr. Moody's. So, thank you.
Okay, great. And that's absolutely, as, as, um, members of the public in that stance. What I'm saying, as a board, we should not be making these decisions without all this greater information, whether it's Mark Moody, Sonny Rob. So, yes, absolutely, Abby, if you want to get in touch with them, um, and include them in this conversation, then that's, that's what the community's for. So, that's fantastic. Um, Michael?
Sorry, before Michael jumps on here, I'm sorry.
Yep.
But just, I guess then, I'd just like to say, anyone who has those concerns, please feel free to reach out to me and let me know so we can collaborate. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Abby. Uh, Michael?
Hey, Ross. Sorry. Uh, first of all, I want to say thank you, Mickey. Um, thanks for working hard on this. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bridgette, as well. I know you both have been working really hard trying to figure things out, see what we can do in ways that make sense. Um, and that's the key, given our small school, where we're at, you know, this makes sense. We get to think about things carefully. Um, I certainly do agree that policy should be kept sort of safe, safe and secure, and that's not public information, you know? I mean, that, that also makes total sense. I do think that it's important, I mean, they, um, appropriate steps to include some visual steps, some steps that the public are going to be aware of, because overt, um, sometimes things that are overt are, support things that are more covert, you know? The, it's like, you know, that there, those are, those are the reasons that those fake cameras exist, right? Because that way, you think there's a camera there. So, if you think there's a camera there, you don't know if it's real or not, but you're just probably going to do what you need to do. That's your, maybe a little bit shifty, but, um, anyway. So, moving on forward, like past that, uh, like, I don't know if you noticed, but on my email, I mentioned some other things that I think would be appropriate and would be important, that, if, for instance, first aid training. I think it's important to train our staff. I think it's important to train our students to the level that they can based on their age. Clearly, things are going to be different for different kids, right? Um, but I also think it'd be important for us to think about some training for parents too. And that's not, you know, we're not just thinking about, you know, some crazy mass casualty thing. I mean, it comes right down to like the boo-boos and the Band-Aids all the way up to the broken boats. Just the, not too far from the last meeting, we had conversations about this. There was a kid I, um, heard about who broke an arm at school.
Yeah, that's true.
Yep, yeah, yep. Uh, but, anyway, so, I think it'd be important to think about, please, that we can include some training for kids, staff, and parents if that's possible. I don't know what the likelihood of that is, but if you can keep that on the back corner and think about that, that'd be greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. Uh, Bridgette?
Hi, so, all right, there we go. Um, so, just to kind of follow up on some of what Mickey said and sort of answering some of those questions as well. Um, I'm taking a class right now online, um, watching a class online. It's about eight hours, and it talks about threat assessment and, um, just, you know, seeing the signs of when we, we think of the worst-case situation. And, you know, obviously, uh, mass shootings are the things that come up really often, and it's, it's sort of ways to, um, avoid that, um, see something, say something, all of that. So, just to kind of fill everyone in on the concern about what we're doing, that is one thing that's happening. Um, some other things we talked about, Mickey mentioned the security cameras. Right now, we do have cameras, uh, but the monitors are sort of tucked away. So, we're either going to move the monitors to the front so it's easily visible, or, um, link it up to my laptop or my phone so I can log in and just see a little bit more easily. Um, and those are just some small things that we're doing. Uh, there are, uh, we are talking about doing a training, uh, first aid training, uh, stop the bleeding with the staff. That's something that we'll all follow up with Greg on, that we're going to do. Um, yes, as, as Michael said, my child is a woman, broke his arm. So, um, that definitely, if I wasn't there, it would have been a 911 call. I think that would have been, um, for sure. Uh, but, so I think that there are things that we can kind of share with the public to sort of ease their concerns. There's, you know, kind of sharing the things that we're, we're making steps towards. Um, so it's not, we're not dismissing the, the thought of security while we'll also keep some of it sort of private in the school, um, teaching the kids what to do and things like that. And so, I do think there is, is a really good balance between the two. Um, Abby talked about reaching out to some other folks and some other trainings. Um, I think, and, you know, we can kind of bring Greg into a future conversation. I didn't meet with him. Um, so, Mark Moody isn't the whole conversation. I think he was part of the conversation, and, and like Abby said, it's because of insurance, I think there was, um, a benefit to having him. But I do know that Greg works pretty hard on this and is doing, um, different trainings, and there's actually something new that they're going to be rolling out, um, at some point soon, um, that he'll be working on teaching staff about as another way to handle an emergency situation. So, it is sort of an evolving conversation. As, you know, Abby pointed out, we live in kind of a scary world, and the way we handle it changes constantly. So, um, it's not like, oh, we put something in place and we're never looking back at it. It's, it's, it's an ongoing, um, thing that's happening. If Bill might be able to correct me or, um, add anything, I'm not sure if I am missing anything. But I, I do know that there's a lot more trainings happening at the supervisory level that are, um, you know, being shared with the different schools.
Wow, great. Uh, thank you, Bridgette. That was, um, I'm glad you mentioned, um, just updating everybody on everything that's happening. And obviously, you guys are all participating in this conversation. That's why I asked if Greg was here, because I know I've seen some of his emails, and he's very much, this is, um, forefront in his mind. So, this is, um, this is definitely an ongoing conversation. Everybody has everybody's best interest, because why else would you be here, quite frankly?
Before Bill says something, I just want to add a couple of other quick things. One is that I did speak with Robert Lakin, who's the officer that is out here typically doing the radar at the school. And he said he's happy to be part of our constituent team and allow all of us to have his cell phone number so that if anything does go out of whack, we can contact him directly and immediately through his cell phone and text and say, "Something's wrong here. Get here," or "Get somebody else here." And he said he was happy to be available as much as he could and to be that person. So, that made me feel really good, because he spends a fair amount of time up here already. So, that was really nice. Um, and the broken arm thing has been brought up, and honestly, that's something I've been wanting to talk about, and this is probably not the correct forum, but as Bridgette said, if that happens, let's say midday at lunch recess, and we try to get in touch with the parent, and they're not home, and this kid has clearly broken his arm and is screaming bloody murder, personally, I'm not calling 911 because they're going to take 40 minutes to get here. I'm putting that kid in the car and bringing him to Grace Cottage, which I know I'm probably not supposed to do, but that's a conversation I'd like to have. Because as a parent, I don't want my kid sitting there screaming for 45 minutes waiting for an ambulance to bring him down the hill when I could do it immediately. But I know that's probably against the rules.
That's fair, and we can add it to the member's agenda.
All right. At some point, we should add that conversation.
No, that's good. No, it's okay.
Maybe I need to hear from the parents, I don't know.
Absolutely, yeah.
But that's like a personal issue for me, because I know if a kid's screaming and yelling. I had multiple accidents, as you know, and it took the ambulance 45 minutes to get to my house.
Okay, that's fair, yeah.
So, that's all. That's not really relevant to now. So, Bill, if you want to speak real quick, and then Crystal?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to compliment Mickey on, uh, you know, doing the deep dive with Mark. That was the direction of the board, and that was really good. It was really good information. And, uh, I also want to compliment Bridgette on, uh, taking the initiative to, uh, further educate herself and look out for the community. And I would make the respectful suggestion that, uh, the board asked Mickey to, uh, meet with Rob Evans. I think that Abby made an excellent suggestion, uh, that would add on to and complement the conversation with Mark Moody. I think I would loop in Greg to that. So, I would love to have Mickey, Greg, and Rob have a conversation, and then report back to the board, um, you know, some next steps. Um, Greg has worked with Rob extensively over the last couple of years. I have worked with Rob and Mark over the last decade. They both bring different skill sets that are both complementary and supportive of each other. So, I think Abby's suggestion to reach out to Rob is a good idea, but I really do think, uh, making sure that all that information flows through the administration at the school and then reports back to the board is key, so that, uh, you just kind of have one focal point to report back to the board. And, uh, that, that would just be my suggestion.
No, that's great. Thank you, Bill. Yeah, we need to handle this in the best way possible and understand that, kind of, the chain of command to make it work for everybody, um, uh, you know, with clarity. So, I, sorry, Crystal, and then I see Abby has her different color hand up.
Since Mickey brought up his issue, I kind of have two questions now.
Okay.
So, um, the gentleman you spoke to, I don't know, because it sounded to me like for a lot of parents, the fencing is a big issue around-
I think everyone agrees on the fencing issue. I could be wrong. I'll be very curious to hear what Rob Evans has to say specifically, but that, to me-
Yeah.
Seems to be something that everyone agrees is not necessarily the best idea at this point. Maybe that's going to be different from what Rob says.
Okay. Um, but to your point about a kid waiting for the ambulance, um, I do think it's a good idea to speak to each parent-
Find out what they want.
And find out-
I agree.
Because I can tell you, it's probably going to be my kid next. Um, and I know from experience with my other kid that sometimes you can wait for that ambulance for two hours.
Okay, so there you go, even worse.
So, if it's my kid, load him and go.
Okay, thank you. Got one done. Awesome.
Okay, that's great. So, yeah, let's definitely, let's add that as a, as a topic.
And I think you probably have to draw permissions links.
Yeah, probably, yeah.
Yes, yeah. I think there's a whole, that's something that we'll put through the administration, um, with Bill, uh, for sure. So, Bill, put that on your radar. Uh, but we're going to move on from that, um, that specifically.
Yeah, Abby.
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. Just, just that. Sorry, Abby, just, just that discussion. Go ahead, Abby.
So, just to, again, go with that same topic, the constable in town to encourage folks here, um, to maybe look into what's been going on at select board meetings. There's a lot of really cool things going on, um, with him and potentially being another additional resource, uh, to our community in a greater capacity. So, um, if, and I don't know, Bill, if this is the appropriate, uh, like, should we, like, look into maybe setting up a committee so that there's a collaborative effort that's reporting to, back to the board? Um, how would that look? And is that something we can maybe put up for another agenda item? Or how would that look?
Mickey, Greg, and Rob Evans having a conversation. Uh, Mickey, if you can just make a note that there's interest in, uh, if there's a need or a desire, or would that be a positive aspect for a community kind of task force involving local law enforcement? Um, I think that's an appropriate question to follow up with Greg and Rob. Um, and then I would say, Abby, uh, let's let those guys meet, find out what they hear, and then, uh, we'll just, I'll just make sure that under Old Business, I'll just keep security as a, um, agenda item so that we have a, a regular report back. And we'll continue this conversation until the public, uh, feels, uh, satisfied that, uh, their concerns have been addressed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Abby and Bill. And, yeah, as far as the constable, um, I feel like that's something that might need to be procured through Robert Lakin, because I don't know what the, what the constable's role is compared to a sheriff, a state police officer. So, that's not something that I wanted to offer, um, right up, because we need to know what that constable, what their role is as far as the town and, and then, um, the state. So, um, so that's great. So, you've got that on your list of things to do.
It's on there.
Okay, does everybody feel good about the discussion so far, knowing that we're obviously moving forward? Okay, hearing, no dispute.
I do, Beth, thank you.
He's good?
I don't know. I'm not sure if he's good or not.
Are you good? Sorry, Michael. You're good?
Yes, I said, "I do."
Oh, I'm sorry. You do. Okay, good. I'm glad. Thank you, Michael. I know you, you started this, you know, one of the people who started this conversation. So, yeah, we're, we're all on it. So, that's great. Okay, we're going to move on to new business then, the principal report.
We're getting there, Lori. Hang in there. You're doing great. Upper grade class is working on their first research project of the year. Students are choosing a type of shark to do some research on. Given the fact that there is one reading group in class that's reading the book Magic School Bus, Great Shark Escape. And the other group is reading, or about to start reading, a book called Shark Lady. Students have been learning how to choose appropriate materials to do research, how to use those materials to do the said research, note-taking skills, using note cards, and presentation skills. Being such a small school with students who are very comfortable with one another in the classroom provides the perfect opportunity to help these students gain confidence when presenting or performing in front of the class. Which leads me, again, to get into my theme so far for the past couple of months about student involvement from Wyndham at the next level. And I would argue that their comfort level coming from the classroom, doing presentations similar to this, is why 30% of the main parts in the Addams Family production were by Wyndham Elementary students. Three out of the 10 main parts were kids who graduated from Wyndham Elementary, and they performed ridiculously well. It was amazing. Hopefully, some of you got to see it, right?
Yes.
I know you got to see it. Awesome, like, super impressive. It's such a proud moment to sit there as a former teacher.
Luca did it.
Luca went nuts.
Luca was amazing.
It was awesome. Like, it's so great to see. And those kids learn those skills here in this school, being comfortable, giving presentations, doing things like this. And then they go on to the next level, and they star in the play. On top of that, two of the five high school chorus members that were present for the pre-holiday concert were also Wyndham School graduates. That's 40% of the high school choir that showed up for the concert was Wyndham Elementary students. That was awesome as well, okay? It's a lot to be proud of as far as I'm concerned. The lower grade class is working in science on learning the phases of the moon and the planets, while they're making a model of the solar system as well. Additionally, they're working in social studies on learning about different types of communities such as rural, suburban, urban, and how members of those communities can be involved and support the school. The second trip to the Brattleboro Museum and Art Center that was scheduled for this morning had to be postponed, but it has already been rescheduled for Tuesday, December 13th, and we'll be taking the bus. All the students at the school have access to a website called iXL. It's a yearly subscription bought by the Supervisory Union for all elementary schools to have access to. It's a great site for teachers to help reinforce the skills that should be mastered, to practice some new skills that have been recently learned, or to help introduce brand-new skills as well. There's both a math and language arts section that can be used depending on what the students need to be working on. The teacher can go onto the site, click on specific grade-appropriate skills that are then practiced by the students online. It's another great way we have personalized learning for each student here. Bridget Corby, our administrative assistant, has agreed to take the eight-hour behavior threat assessment training, which has come about from our recent conversations about school and building safety. Bridget will get trained online over the course of the next few months or a few weeks. This is just one part of our renewed efforts to increase student and staff safety here at the school. The past month, our staff has been responding to increased concern over safety of the school and the building. In response to a letter the school received last spring, the staff here at the school, in conjunction with other various school safety experts, have been working diligently to address the various concerns brought up in that letter. We've had meetings with Greg Frost, who suggested a training that's being taken by our administrative assistant, conversations with Mark Moody from Secure Your Building Consulting, gone over our current crisis plan to make appropriate modifications, and spent time with the students going over our drill procedures, having practice drills, and doing the AOE required monthly drills as well. There's an ongoing conversation that will provide the opportunity for us as a school and community to create the most safe and productive environment for our students, which you heard again tonight. It will continue and be an ongoing discussion. On Monday, October 31st, we had another sub who's new to our building come in for the day to sub for Mr. BJ. We want to welcome Julie Olson to our substitute teacher list. She seemed to enjoy being here. She's already signed up for another day in a few weeks. She did a great job keeping the students on task for the day, and it just happened to be lucky enough that she was here on Halloween Day, since we all know that the day after Halloween is one of the most challenging days of the school year. On that Halloween Monday, the students spent the afternoon painting the pumpkins that were grown out back on our sledding hill this summer, making masks of their choosing for Halloween, and then went over to the town office to do some trick-or- and then went over to the town office to do some trick-or-treating with their newly-made masks, which has become a tradition that we didn't do for a couple of years, but it's back in action. Thank you.
Nice. How many pumpkins did you all grow?
Twelve pumpkins, and then we were able to get seven more from somewhere donated. So everybody was able to paint a pumpkin.
And you grew them on the sledding hill?
Yeah, the sledding hill looked amazing. There was pumpkins growing, squash, gourds, flowers. It was really cool.
It was dynamite. Any questions? Thank you. Any questions for the principal? Michael Pelton.
Mickey, I just want to say thank you very much for your principal's report. They're always very thorough, and I enjoy listening to you telling us about what's going on. And thank you for pointing out all the fantastic things that our, I guess you call them, alumni are doing at the high school. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael. I really appreciate hearing that. It brings me great joy to be able to talk about the former students and how well they're doing and how involved they are and just what they bring at this point in their lives. So thank you. I appreciate your appreciation.
And I think the Addams Family is going to show up on YouTube.
Oh, really?
As did Mamma Mia.
Cool.
Yes. And I got to say, being at those shows and then seeing two little boys from Wyndham show up and be like, you know, is just really tremendous. So yeah, it was fantastic. From the staff who played in the band.
Right.
To the director, and obviously the staff out there, to just the whole community.
Right, Dad and being on the lighting crew.
Yep.
I mean, the kids are involved. It's great.
Yeah, it was a really fantastic show. Anybody else for the principal? Okay, hearing none, then financials. As far as financials, I have three pay orders, 15, 16, and 17. 15 and 17 are just payrolls, and 16 is all of our invoices, vendors. And there was nothing that stood out to me. I don't know if anybody else says anything they want to, you should be getting this from the Supervisory Union. Okay. Okay. It's all the basic VCTV, Brian. No, Brian, we're glad you're here. You keep us.
Behaving well.
Behaving well, exactly. It's First Light Fiber, it's just our internet telephone, our trash pickup. There's nothing, health insurance, and then our quarterly, second quarterly assessment from the WCSU, Rick Weitzel. So there's nothing that stood out. So I'll take a motion to approve the minutes 15 through 17. I'm sorry, the pay orders. Thank you, Russ. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, pay orders 15 through 17 are approved. Thank you very much. All right, Lori, you're up.
All right. Can everybody hear me? Because I'm a little far away from the microphone. Everybody hear me? Raise a hand.
To project anything, you just tell me, okay?
Okay, if you could watch for hands, because I can't do my glasses and breathe, so that would be great.
You got it.
All right. So first off, I would like to go over, as part of the budget tour, I'm doing a brief overview of the WCSU budget that was approved. Remind me of the date, Bill?
November 16th.
Thank you. I was going to say the 16th, and then it went out of my head. So it was approved. Beth and Russ were there at the meeting, but I really would like to do a brief overview. For the members of the public that don't have it in front of them, I have copies here, but you can go to westrivered.org, and under Budget 24, it is listed there. And it should be on the WCSU website tomorrow. So that is a place that you can go to review this. All right, going to dive into this review. So for those of you that are new to the budget world here, WCSU, it budgets assess all the districts at this point mostly on ADF. So you're paying a percentage of all the costs that are coming through. So the superintendent's budget, the expenses were up roughly about almost 18%, which is a big increase for us. However, our revenues from grants and what they call federal indirect was also up. So we really only have a 2.55 assessment increase for all of the districts. And the technology budget was up as well, so you will see that over in Wyndham's budget when we get there. And then the MTSS, which is the Multi-Tierred System of Support budget, which includes your special education costs and also academic support costs, was up 7.79%, but we were also able to use some grant funding and some fund balance and reduce that assessment down to 2.91%. So both of those assessments were actually quite conservative in this environment, economic environment. ECSE expenses, which is Early Childhood Special Education expenses, were actually down almost 35%. And if you, I'm not sure if you remember from last year, but the Wyndham Central, the superboard, voted to share all of those costs, and so you're sharing all of that reduction as well. So that you will see as a reduction in costs when it comes across to Wyndham's budget. So that's really the basic overview. It's, the budget is about 20 pages long, so please feel free to email me if you have any other questions about it. But I don't want to take too long tonight to go through each line item. So now we'll dive right into Wyndham's budget. So this went out to the board Sunday, I think it was, and it is only the expense part of the budget. I did not include revenues. We do not have a lot of the information we need from the state at this point. So, but there's a lot to discuss in this expenditure budget. So there, there you go. Got it up there. Thank you. All right, so 4% to 5% increase in salaries. That's what was assumed here. 12% increase in healthcare. That one was below double digits last year, but it has caught up with itself and is above. I also want to remind the board that 23% of one of the teaching positions is still in ESAR, and it will continue to be in ESAR next year, in fiscal year '24. So that's good news and it's bad news, right? So it's good news that it's not in this particular budget. It's bad news because in fiscal year '25, you're going to have to budget that in full, in the local budget. So the other major increase in this budget is what Mickey talked about with the safety concerns, is increasing the admin assistant position to a full-time position from a 0.5 to a 1.0, and that includes benefits along with that. So what's not in this budget? So there's still things that are not in this budget. One is the food program. And the reason that it's not in here is because I'm trying to gather more information from the state as to what the food, what the food program will look like, universal meals will look like next year. You know, this year, it was, all the students in Vermont are eating for free. And as a side note, for this year, fiscal year '23, you implemented the food program. You purchased the meals from West River. They're delivered and served here at the school. And right now, it's looking like, we just got some revenue projections, that as far as the food is concerned, it will be covered in full. There will be no extra cost to Wyndham. However, the, I think, and we talked about this, the delivery and service is an extra cost, which is not budgeted for this year. So that will be an additional cost that'll be coming to you. So, okay, Russ?
Mr.?
Yep?
Yep. And the question I have, is the $6,329 the salary for the food service persons?
No, Russ, that's a good question. So because Wyndham now does a food service, you are also paying a percentage of the compliance costs that comes through Wyndham Central. So on staff, we have a person that deals with all of the compliance and also inputs the meals into the system and how we get, how we get the revenue and all of that. So that is, went from, I think, $22 to $6,313. So that is an increase just based on the food program and compliance.
That's a cost for an employee of the Wyndham Central Supervisory Union to do the paperwork necessary to support the program.
That's right. And so it's not the delivery. No, that is not in here yet. So, not knowing, yes, Mickey?
Do we know for sure that this, that law that they passed like the day before June 1st last year is still in effect? Is that just set now forever, or is that like a one-year thing as well?
It's a one-year thing for universal meals. What I asked, which I'm not sure about, is the exemption, right? So the exemption went away because the law was enacted for universal meals for this year.
So might that come back if they change that?
That is the question that I've asked.
That's a great question.
Yes, and I have, I have not received an answer yet. So that is, I'm definitely looking into it. I think that it's, you know, it's also important to understand that if the universal meals is not done by the state, Wyndham has two options, right? Wyndham could provide universal meals through provision two, so the taxpayers would pick up the cost of whatever was not received from the federal and state revenues. Or you could charge for meals. And so those are the things that are on the table now. The other issue on the table is the person delivering and serving the meals, or that position, could that be done by the administrative assistant going to a full-time position? So those are some of the questions that I think the board needs to think about and talk about. But overall, the budget is up 12.81%. And if we added another, I'm sorry?
Russ's hand is up, I think is what he's trying to say.
Okay, Russ?
I have two other questions. On the first page, item 5591 and 5593, the administrative technology services?
Yes.
I see with the $12,729 has been supplanted by $19,171, and I'm wondering what the difference is in terms of the ASU assessment versus the purchase firm, SubBT, LEA?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question, Russ, because it's a new G thing, to be honest with you. It's a coding issue that I have to change it because prior to last year, I think it was, technology was a purchase service from, you know, you could buy into the technology service at WCSU. And now it is an assessed cost to all of the districts. And so, as you know, I'm under, we work under the Uniform Chart of Accounts for the state of Vermont, so that was the change I had to make.
Can you describe what that service entails so I understand it better?
Uh, yes.
The components of the service?
Sure, yeah. The WCSU technology, there is four members, 4.5 members on staff that are available to handle any problems. They do all the ordering for the hardware. They manage the software. I think it was Mickey was talking about iXL, that type of thing. They're managing that, those software products. And again, most of it is support, you know, it's, you, when somebody has an issue with their computer, that's what they're emailing IT at Wyndham Central.
Thank you.
They also help a lot with the assessments. We do the AIMS Web Assessment and those types of things. If we get stuck on that, we can reach out to them, which to me is the most valuable piece of what they do for me.
Great, yeah. Yeah, Mickey actually can probably tell you the day-to-day benefits, so.
So the testing assessments, you're saying?
Yeah, like if you go on to do the AIMS Web where we got a progress monitor, and that's what we use the data for the fall, winter, and spring benchmarks, and you try to get on and something doesn't work, or the kid's password's not functioning, or you know, just something's wrong, you can reach out to IT and say, hey, we're having this problem. And they're pretty good about getting in touch quickly and trying to solve it for you, which is really nice.
Great. Thank you. It looks like there's, can I, Lori?
Yeah, one more thing about.
Hold on a second, Michael.
Hold on one second, Michael. I just want to finish up with the technology. And it is a big increase, right, this year, the $6,000. And a lot of that is in the hardware and software lines just from inflationary factors and different softwares that we're using now. They did, also did add another person because they're just, you know, spread too thin with six districts and not many students.
Okay. So Ross, we go to Michael, and then back to you. All right, Michael.
I just have a couple of questions and transport students there. It's 2711. So it talks about, my spectacles, I sort of squint here. There's no work comp listed for '22, '23 actual, and then all of a sudden we have work comp budgeted for '23 budget. And then the other thing I was interested about is the gasoline. I'm assuming it's actually supposed to be diesel fuel. It looks like it's $6,000, we budgeted for four maybe, and then it goes back, we're proposing six. I think you'll notice, at least in the last month, you probably don't see those figures, at least from the town, but looking at the town budget, it looks like our fuel has increased two and a half times over the last month and a half. So I would encourage the board to think about budgeting at least three times what they paid this year. Like think high, and if you end up with like extra, great, but I would expect that the fuel costs are going to go up based on what's going on in the world out there. The other thing is, we budgeted $7,000 for, you know, actual is $7,000. Seven, $7,258 for oil, and that's line 5624. Looks like we budgeted $3,500. We're going to maybe budget $6,000 for '23. I guess the proposed is $75,000, I kind of squint here. But I would also think about propane being a little bit higher next year too. Based on what's going on, I think we'll see the market looking a little bit finicky. So think high again. I know it's not fun, but I would shortchange it some, so that'd be.
Thank you, Michael. It's a good point. Ross?
Would you like, Lori, to tell me what non-technical impairment means under that line item of 2711 inside of 5431?
Under which?
Second page, second one.
Non-technical repair maintenance, is that for anticipated furnace repairs or repairs to the, to the bus or what?
To the bus, yeah.
Okay, so it's anticipating $5,000 of repairs to the bus?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I just, you know, I brought that over from last year, the same number. In '22, you only spent $3,600. But I believe Cord and I had a conversation last year about that $5,000 number. So I didn't feel the need to increase that.
Okay. Anybody else for Lori? Can she continue? Do you want to continue?
I'm happy to continue.
All right, keep going.
Okay, so we were discussing the food program. And so if we add roughly $20,000, which would be transporting and serving the food, and perhaps, you know, non-cover and perhaps, um, you know, non-covered food costs, then that's going to get you up to a budget that is 17% higher than last year's budget. So, um, there's a couple of different things that you could look at to reduce. I'm not, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it, but, um, last year was the first year that you put in a line item to transfer money to capital. So that was $10,000, so that's been transferred over to the capital account. And again, I just brought that over from last year until further direction from the board. So, um, that is one, just one area. Other than that, there's really not a lot of wiggle room in this budget.
Michael or Russ?
Who was first?
I did not see who was first.
All right, we're just going to go in order.
Go ahead, Russ.
Thank you, Michael.
Now, we just wanted to say that if we, with a budget of $489,000 and 18.5% of equalized pupils estimated, that's a cost of 26, about $26,500 per student. That's pretty expensive.
Okay, um, thank you, Russ. Michael?
Um, I think it, um, well, actually, my question sort of stems from the potential surplus that the board has. I would encourage the board to utilize some of the surplus to buy back some of the budget to help ease the tax burden for the residents. But I'd also encourage the board to make sure that they reserve a sufficient amount to help take care of the unforeseen, because Lori knows if you don't have the money in the bank, the bus is going to break and we're going to have to buy a new one or something silly. So plan ahead, but also remember that everybody's spending more for everything these days, so we're here, we're, we support you with that.
Thank you, Michael. I know that was always something the board was adamant about. I think Lori can agree that we always put money aside and will continue to do that. But real quick, before I see Abby and Bridget, just so to answer Michael's question.
So Michael, Michael just jumped ahead of me, so where I was headed next was to talk about this year and also the fund balance. So, um, which is another area that we can look at to bring down this percentage. So the, for this year, it's looking like between $12,000 and $15,000 surplus, and that is after the, the oil, uh, the propane boiler and everything else has been taken care of, including the kitchen. I think most everything has been done for the kitchen. There may be a few other things out there, but accounted for that. So, so that's where we're looking for, um, for fiscal year '23, the end of '23. And you're coming in with a surplus of $80,000. So it's definitely, once we have more information from the state, you know, next budget meeting, we can come and, you know, start to look at tax rates and then how much to use of the fund balance to bring down that tax rate.
All right, Mike. Great, okay. So good question for you, Michael. Thank you. Let's do Abby and then Bridget.
All right, there you go. Um, so with what Michael had mentioned about the, you know, bus, I mean, have money set aside for bus repair, I don't, who would know the information as far as where we're at, like do we owe money on the current bus? Do we own the bus? Is it something, would it make more sense to get like a hybrid gas slash electric vans and get two? It's just something to maybe consider. I don't know what, what we have as far as that to impact that down the road. So I don't know what people's thoughts are on that, but, um, being a little bit more conservative on the types of fuel we're using and the cost of the fuel may be beneficial, but I don't think fully electric vehicle is, um, probably would be able to manage all of our hills, but maybe something hybrid. I don't know how that, how that conversation goes about.
No, that's a great question, Abby. And what do you, so you want to give us an update on where we are with the bus?
So the bus is paid for, so you don't owe anything on the bus. The only debt that you have is the promissory note for the electric retrofitting that happened years ago now. And that, that's only got a couple more, well, three more years, I think. We can look into that. I guess I would want to have a conversation with Cord or have Cord come back and report out to the board as to, um, you know, his recommendations, being the bus driver. And, um, and then also get Greg involved as well with that.
That's great. That's a great question, Abby. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got to go off top.
What is the?
I'm sorry, Michael, what was that? Nope, you want to?
What is the electric refit she, Lori was talking about?
Um, do you remember when they did the, uh, it was an organization, it was before my time, so I don't really have, I don't have that document in front of me, but, um, they came in and did some lighting retrofits. You remember that, right? The, um?
Here in the school?
Yeah.
Not in the bus?
No, not in the bus. I was saying that the only debt you have is that.
Yeah, nope. I remember that, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep. Um, so again, I just got to jump off top, gets to drive me crazy. Abby, when you get on the screen, all I can see is your head and there's like a black background and it's just killing me because there's something from my youth that I remember watching where there was just a head on the screen and it was all black and the head would float around and that's all I'm thinking every time I look at you, so I apologize if I'm looking weird or if something's strange, but.
I am, so it was something, I'm.
It's from, uh?
Don't be sorry, I love it. I'm just trying to remember what it's from. It was like a blank screen, it was all black and it was just a head floating around.
Max Headroom.
Was it? I don't know, re-earlier, I'm sorry to go off topic.
Max Headroom.
What is it? Max Headroom, maybe that's what it is? It's something, either way, sorry. Go ahead, Bridget.
All right.
Uh, so my question is for Lori. Now that we have a, um, we have an actual food program, we could get grants to support that food program, is that something that we could be looking at now to support next year's budget?
You could, yeah. I, I mean, there, there are grants available. It's really having a point person that can write those grants, um, you know, in conjunction with Wyndham Central managing them through. So, um, yeah, something that somebody wants to take on, they could look into it.
Because I know, like last, before we actually started a food program, I talked to Hunger Free Vermont and they had offered to help with finding grants and I don't, you know, when that was to get the program started, I'm just wondering if I circle back with them and see if they can help us keep it going. So now that we have it up and running and it's going to cost more money, um, so I don't mind reaching out and seeing if they have any direction to go in for that, but, um, I'm just wondering if that, if we look at that now, can that help us next year?
Yes. Anything that's not, um, you can fundraise or anything for the food program outside of what is paid for by the state and federal government.
Great. Great, and Bridget, that would be awesome. I know Abby was, um, working on, always talking about grant writers and, and getting that kind of going. And I think we've had a conversation, I think there's some people in town, one person in particular who Abby knows who is definitely interested in, in helping guide us on that. So, yeah, so can you keep us in the loop with that, Bridget? Abby, did you want to add anything to that?
I changed. The, uh, key.
She what?
Changed her background.
As far, as far as the grant rating goes, that's wonderful. And yes, uh, and Bridget, I think if you are interested in collaborating on that, um, that's a beautiful thing, so, um, more, stay tuned.
Yeah, I'll, I can reach out and just going to keep anyone updated if anything comes amid.
Yeah, definitely let me know also, as I said, there's someone in town who has experience in that and we can definitely make that work.
Yes, please bloop in, uh, myself as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, that.
No, that's okay. It's just that sometimes we find out about grants after they have been, um, applied for and received, so.
Oh, no. Keeping you in the loop goes without saying, Lori. Yeah, we're not doing this without you, so. So do you have, do you want to continue or do you feel good?
Well, I think that, um, you know, I guess my questions for the board are, uh, the conversation around, um, the full-time administrative assistant picking up and serving the food or whether that will be an additional cost to this budget for next year.
Yep, so Bridget and I have had that conversation, at least started that conversation, and I, she can certainly speak for herself, but I got the impression that she was willing to do that if it needs to happen.
Okay.
Do you want to comment, Bridget?
Uh, sure. Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, if that was the direction that the board wanted to go in and there was a full-time position, that, uh, but I'm available to work full-time, however it looks.
And I want her here full-time.
Dynamite. Do you want to?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I will.
Okay, no, good time.
I don't want to teach anybody, I'm going to speak pretty intensely, I think, when I do, so I don't want to get too nuts until we know all the information.
Dynamite, yes, whatever you want.
Thanks.
That's what we're here for. Okay, anybody else for Lori? Because this is, and I cannot stress this enough, this is whoever's in this meeting, whoever you talk to in town, this is the person to talk to. And it can come through us, but this is who we rely on. This is our person who has been fantastic, who we love, and, um, who is highly, highly regarded, not just in the, um, Wyndham Central Supervisory Union, but quite frankly, throughout the state of Vermont. So we are incredibly lucky.
Thank you.
To have you. Oh, come on, girl, you know it's true.
That's out of question.
Go ahead, first question.
So, I want to be Debbie Downer, but.
Oh, Lord, okay.
So looking at this budget, so are we looking at a cost based on this of $27,000 per student or?
Um, it could get, it probably won't get to $27,000, but it could get pretty high and you are the highest tax rate in the state of Vermont right now. So that is, it is concerning. We do have the fund balance, um, that you can draw on. I think it's important, it's important to wait until we have all the information. We don't know what the yield is, that should be coming out very soon. And last year it was, um, it was higher than it normally is, so I don't expect to have a yield that high, uh, which of course, if the yield comes down, the tax rates go up. And then the equalized pupils will need those. Those should be in your favor, um, this year because you're, you have more students this year, but it is a two-year rolling average. So both of those things are what drive the tax rate. And, and then, then we have to talk about CLA, which is a three-year average as well, and that is also going to be not in your favor. So.
And do you know what the average cost per student is kind of throughout the state?
Um, it's actually done by cohort, so I can get that information. I actually just had to get it for, um, West River, who is the highest in their cohort.
Okay.
Um, but, so there's a trend here.
Yeah.
Apparently.
But I can try to get it for, um, you know, Wyndham School cohort. But the average tuition cost, which is a little bit different, it's if you're tuitioning students, that's 17, 728 this year, so.
Yeah, just because, and are you going to, I thought I overheard you say you're going to do a budget for non-operational as well?
Um, I haven't been asked to do that.
Okay. Just because, you know, I'm sure everybody's feeling it, um, but, you know, with the increased costs of everything, like, I mean, I pay my taxes, now we pay our father-in-law's taxes because of the increases, you know, his income doesn't cover his taxes. And, you know, it's a, it's a pretty big deal.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know, and it's not like you can say, well, I'm going to pick up and move because there is no place to move. So. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Uh, Russ, sorry, go ahead.
Now, the one question I have, and this is probably too technical for most people, but, um, I get, uh, emails in the town office and I got an email that included the education tax payments for all the towns in the state of Vermont. And in the bottom half of the first page is a summary of payments to the local school district or the town treasurer. And for the town of Wyndham, it totals $536,754. But in reality, we only raise $402,000 in taxes to, for the education tax. So why is there a $134,000 difference? And where does that difference come from?
Uh, Russ, that's what you send to, uh, West River for secondary students, I believe. I would have to look at the document that you're.
Yeah, it's $174,000 to the West River unit and $362,000 to the local school district.
So you're paying $134 more to the ed fund?
$134,000 more than what the total tax revenues are we are raising for the education in town.
So there are some districts that receive money, extra money from the, the ed fund and there are districts, um, that send more money, um, to the ed fund.
So, so that's what we're doing. We're sending $134,000 more to the education fund that we actually raised in taxes.
That's probably correct.
Probably from the non-home state taxpayers.
Yeah, I would have to look at the cash flow statement that is probably what you're referring to, but that sounds to me like what is happening.
And I think we've, the.
And that's what I suspected, but I wasn't sure.
And that's pretty much always been the case, I think, with Wyndham, that we send more.
That, yes, I believe that's probably true.
Yeah, I think that's been one of the issues, yeah, for years, for sure. So, yeah, thank you, Russ, um, for bringing that up. Do you have, so Lori, do you have that information, that document that he's talking about or do you need it?
The cash flow statement?
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, any other questions for Lori? Okay, so.
Let Lori go home.
Okay, Mr. Man. Lori gets to go home. Thank you, Lori. So from us, um, we're, we're going to meet again, it looks like December 20th, is that right? Do we, is that good, December 20th?
It's today, I'm not going to be here.
You're not going to be here? Do we want to, okay, so just real quick, before Lori leaves, um, it sounds like December 20 too late, do you want to meet before then or?
If you do it before then, it's only two weeks from now, which seems crazy. And if you do it after that, that's Christmas vacation week, which I believe I can't be here that week either.
So we're just going to do it without you?
Yeah, Bill's prepared to come and do it. I think I have too much input with all this budget stuff, but certainly I can respond as needed.
Yep. Obviously, you've already had this conversation, so it's nice.
And so from my standpoint, I will bring a second draft, uh, making note of some of the changes that we talked about. And by then, hopefully, I will have more information on the food program, which I'll include in, to the budget.
Okay.
I should have, um, by the 20th, I should have most all of the information except for the CLA, probably, uh, that we can come up with a, a tax rate and then you can make decisions.
Okay.
Okay?
Great, thank you, Lori, very much. Okay, um, great, thank you, everybody, that was a great.
Can I just say real quick?
Yeah.
Um, here, here.
Yeah. Nope. We could, now you disappeared.
Uh, since, um.
Not happening.
Oh, um.
There we go.
Real quick. Oh, you're gone again. Oh, here, here, current has been due. Between the, um, I think it's been, I would say, you know, Bridget's interested in doing the, I haven't pulled.
I'm sorry, Abby, you're really, you're really. I'm sorry, Abby, you're really, you're really breaking up there.
I'm huge.
All right, you hear me, Lori?
I think what Abby's saying is that Erin is currently providing some level of service in the food program at Wyndham. And so, if that changes to have the administrative assistant do that, that one, we should probably communicate with the person who's doing that and two, to be thanking the person for doing that. But I'm just guessing.
I have already had that conversation.
Yep, so, yeah, Mickey's on it, so.
Close.
Yep, thank you.
Nope, it was, to make sure then, want to, that GK needs to do so and to see if we.
Maybe the age.
No, no.
I'm sorry.
I think what Abby was suggesting is what would the cost be if you continued to do that and you have the full-time?
Got you.
Okay, real, real quick, because Bill, you said Lori could leave. So, Lori, go, you're on.
So, Abby, that's where I said that it would add potentially another $20,000 to the budget that it was presented tonight, which would include other costs to the food program and the person to deliver and serve it. And also, as a side note, Abby, will you check your email and get back to me because it regards a payment?
Oh, oh, yeah, Abby, you want to do that?
Do you think you'll know about that exemption before the next meeting?
I hope to. I sent the email to the state a couple of days ago, so I have, I hope to have some information.
Great, thanks.
All right. Okay, I'm sorry, Abby, was there anything else? Now I can see you. And now you're gone again. All right, let's go to Bill, the superintendent's reports. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, it'll be done before Lori packs up and gets out of there.
Oh, Lori, no.
All right, so I provided you all with a written report, but just a couple of things to highlight. Lori already said WCSU budget passed. Very happy that the assessments are going to be much lower than inflation. Again, I think that goes to the impressive budgeting that Lori Garland has been doing for the past seven years. And Beth, you nailed it, that Lori is not only doing great work for the WCSU, but is often consulted by other supervisory unions for her expertise along with the state. So, thank you for pointing that out. I also want to compliment the WCSU board for allocating financial resources for an equity coordinator. So, the leadership team has been tasked with creating a process for exploring an equity coordinator for the '23-'24 school year. And the WCSU board unanimously allocated money for that. And incoming superintendent Bob Tebow and myself are working on a process right now about how that will play out. But I really wanted to compliment the WCSU board. And I want to compliment the Wyndham representatives for their support in that work. I will be meeting with all the superintendents from Wyndham and Windsor County and all the newly elected legislators on December 9th. We do this annually after the election or before the second part of the biennium, where the legislators kind of share what they imagine, what the legislate chore will look like. And we keep a communication throughout the session. So, it's a really good opportunity for us as superintendents to hear what our legislators think are priorities and try to be able to put in front of them what we believe are educational priorities. And then finally, Mickey, to answer your question about Abby's background, I believe the answer is the Bear Blair Witch Project.
Oh, my gosh, that's so good.
That's why I've got three different suggestions.
Wild. I'm going with talking heads. That's a good one, though. Okay, thank you, Superintendent Anton. Any questions for the superintendent?
I have a couple.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So, when you meet with the legislators, are you still moving forward with district-wide choice?
So, I've already been in contact with our longest-serving legislator in the WCSU, Laura Sibilia. I have drafted a possible bill for presentation and she is going to be taking that forward as the session begins in January. And I will be updating boards as that moves forward. I might need to be calling on some individuals to testify while that is possibly considered in committee.
And my second question is, when we hire a teacher, do they all sign a minimum of a one-year contract? Or can some of them say, I don't want a contract?
Each school board has different rules as they have different master agreements and different collective bargaining agreements. Wyndham is one of our schools that does not have a collective bargaining agreement. So, the WCSU does produce a contract for teachers at the Wyndham School and they are all by statute a one-year contract.
Okay, thanks.
Good, okay. Anybody else for Superintendent Anton? Okay, hearing none, thank you, everybody. We're going to meet again December 20th, 6:00 p.m. And otherwise, if anybody has anything, please feel free to reach out to any of us at the school, the board, central office. Otherwise, we're going to adjourn this meeting at 7:37. Thank you, Brian, from BCTV.
And it's Giving Tuesday, so.
All right.
To your favorite nonprofit or local organization.
Nice. Thank you.